It is six thirty-one. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. And I actually think we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody could mute, feel free to rise if you would like to and pledge along with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody. So tonight, we have on the agenda first, our FY twenty-five public budget hearing. And so I'm going to turn to our vice chair for a motion to open that hearing.
Thank you. I move to open the fiscal year twenty-five budget hearing at six thirty-two P M.
I'll second that. And we can take the roll call. Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Dana?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yeah.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Excellent. So we are in the public hearing. And if you wouldn't mind, we typically ask that anybody who's online with us just changes their name on their tile to reflect who they are. First name and last name would be fantastic. I know it can be a little tricky, the technology. So the public hearing, hopefully, our friends, our neighbors can do that while we just move ahead. The public hearing is going to be turned over to our superintendent, Superintendent Downing. I'm going to give it to you to give a brief presentation. And then we can hear public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your recognition. Thank you to the school committee and to the public who's joined us this evening. I am joined by our business and operations director, Mr. Ross Mulcaren, as well as Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Laura Friend. Mr. Mulcaren and I tonight are going to go through a brief budget presentation with you all. If you had an opportunity to see the joint Finance Committee Advisory Committee meeting, the presentation you'll see tonight is taken from that template with current updates. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren to pull up our slide deck and we will begin.
Also, Superintendent Downing?
I think we're all set. Let's go ahead and begin our first slide. So as this committee is very familiar with, we always begin our budget presentations with our Y, which is our mission vision, core values, and theory of actions. We talk about equality and equity in the budgeting process, and the equality is when we are using standards to build our buildings, like, for instance, class size standards. And equity is distributing our resources across the system based upon the needs that are in those environments. And then we're going to go through the budget work itself, looking at the timeline, the work to date, and how it's all reflected in the town assessments. So in Neshoba, we inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential and become active contributors to their community. This is our mission. Next. And within that, we built a vision to pave your path, impact the world, and be your best self. This is true for all members of the organization, not just our students, but our employees, and we look to our communities to join us in that support. So in our core values, we value academic achievement, personal growth, voice choice and agency, lifelong learning, a safe, caring, and inclusive community, collaborative partnerships, innovation, and a sense of belonging for all. And in Neshoba, when we say for all, we mean each and every person. So it is our theory of action that through strong communication systems and protocols, clearly aligned curricula, innovative practices, shared leadership, equitable opportunities and outcomes for all, and effective resource allocation, we will inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential in becoming active contributors to their community. So as I stated in the open, we build the budget and we think about these two factors. What is equality or equal? And what are the things that we base on equity, or what the learner needs, or what the area of the organization needs? So in equality, in terms of how we build our schools equally, we look at administration ratios, counselor ratios, deans, class sizes. Those standards being class sizes of twenty-four to one, except in grades kindergarten through second, twenty-two to one. And then in equity, we have to deploy staffing based on the needs of our students. And so for special programming for students on IDPs, or if there's targeted instruction for our English learners, same for Todd one students, and also supporting our multi-tiered systems of support. We may have some variances in our staffing from building to building depending on the demand within each building. Mr. Mulcaren?
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. As the committee is aware, and members of the public who may have watched previous meetings or watched our joint FinCom advisory meeting last week, this was the amount of work that we've done to date. And here we are at March sixth at the public hearing, and the school committee will have an update on the budget at the conclusion of this meeting. There's quite a bit of work that goes into this that begins with our staffing and looking at personnel as well as our non-salary budgets. Over the course of those several months, we have a significant amount of meetings with members of our administrative team, including our directors and our principals. We also work with individuals such as our insurance reps to understand what our increases may be. That has certainly been a topic of discussion this year. We also work with our town administrators as we submit capital plans. And again, throughout this budget process, we are constantly going back into and reviewing where our projected expenditures and revenues are at relative to our goals as a school district.
So as we look at the major budget factors that we had deployed with this year, we had some significant special education cost increases to educate the citizens of our communities that need specialized services, particularly out-of-debt district placements. We also received news that our Chapter Seventy Education Aid did not come in at the projected levels that we've received the past three years. We also have to honor our contractual obligations. And in this year's assessments, you will begin to see built into those assessments the new debt for high school construction. However, Mr. Mulcaren will show later in the presentation how the operational budget is disaggregated from the debt assessment.
So for members of the public, here is our work to date in summary. We began with a proposed operating budget of sixty-eight point almost seven million dollars back in the middle of January on our public workshop, our budget workshop with school committee. Again, this is the first public release of the budget. However, we've been working on it for several months. Over the course of the last three meetings, which essentially is almost two full months' worth of work, we've now reduced our proposed operating budget to where it is this evening. At the conclusion of this meeting, when we meet with the school committee, we'll walk through our additional changes to the proposed operating budget. As you can see, we began with almost a seven percent increase in our operating budget, and we're now down just at about three and a half percent. So what does that mean relatively over time? Obviously, over the last six years, we are within the average of those, and we are looking healthy as far as our operating budget proposed increase relative to what the voted increases were in previous years. Again, this is important to note as we onboard our school debt, the debt assessment will look obviously different, but we want to think about apples to apples here in operating budgets to operating budgets when we think about how these increases have played out over time. Where our operating budget is this evening, that we'll go into detail with school committee, is sixty-six million five hundred and twenty thousand with four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our overall total budget is sixty-nine million two hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, as that also includes our copiers lease and the debt for the high school. Our proposed budget drivers, as they're presented every year, look like this right now. A couple of things that I want to point out to the public are obviously the increases in our special education transportation, as well as our special education non-salaried, which includes those placements. We're also seeing some additional changes in our facilities that are negligible. And actually, we're going down because we've taken on some good contracts with some collective purchasing. The debt service obviously is significant here as well. So the budget drivers, in essence, we can look at our salaries and insurance and benefits with basically taking up almost eighty percent of our operating budget year to year. Special education takes about four percent, and you can see the remaining that are here as well. Every month, especially with budget warrant, we look through our operating budget reports, and here are our expenditures laid out in that format. In orange is what was voted last year with our total budget, and you can see how the changes have happened with each one of these cost centers over time during this budget season to where we are currently in green. And again, you can see some of the changes there. I'll point out the curriculum professional development line, which has gone up, where it shows about twenty-eight percent. The change there is significantly linked to our goal to bring on a new literacy curriculum K to five, and we continue to maintain that in the budget. You can also see some of the other changes relative to system-wide, which includes the school debt and our special education numbers as well. Oh, the town assessments. So our assessments are made up essentially totally of the minimum local contribution set by the state, the variable assessment, which is set by the regional agreement, and our debt assessments. So when it comes to the minimal local contribution, which is set by the state, you can see the changes over time. Well, we can see that the tiers of, or excuse me, the Stowe always has the highest, followed by Bolton, and then Lancaster relative to each other. We can see that from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-five. They're in a relatively same trajectory, but you can see the range between the two is shrinking. And that has to do with our equalization values and then also other changes that the state looks at. Superintendent Downing, did you want to add anything on that?
I think you had all the right notes.
The variable assessment per the regional agreement is based on that five-year rolling average that I think a lot of folks are understanding if they're following school committee meetings and budget warrant and/or those joint FinCom advisory meetings. Oh, here is our five-year rolling average of enrollment within the district. And you can see the changes in what that means as far as the percentages of the operating budget that gets assessed for the variable assessment. As a percentage, what we can see here is some significant changes due to how enrollment has changed in the district over time. So in FY twenty-one, Stowe, then Bolton, then Lancaster, as far as the percentages goes, that has changed over time as more students from Lancaster are attending our schools relative to the decrease in enrollment in Bolton and Stowe. Superintendent Downing, anything to add on five-year average for enrollment?
I would just like to add that when we come up at the annual school choice hearing in April, I'll be giving a comprehensive presentation on enrollment and population changes in our towns over the recent years.
So here's the variable assessment in dollar figures over time. Again, you can see sort of the order of towns with Stowe having the largest variable assessment, followed by Bolton, then Lancaster continues to remain true for FY twenty-five. However, you can see that the difference, the delta between the towns is shrinking as these things increase and enrollment changes. Our capital debt assessment, which is related to the high school, the language is from the regional agreement, which is here. This is a presentation I did back in December for school committee. We use our high school enrollment as of October one for this calculation. You can see the enrollment that was presented then and is here as well, and how that breaks down for percentages, which is applied to our debt assessment. So again, you can see the changes in enrollment percentages over time relative to where they're at right now. And again, just to show, at least for the high school, Lancaster now has a higher number of student enrollment at the high school than Bolton, which is a change in historicals. So here's the total capital debt assessment. You know, the high school renovation that was done twenty-some odd years ago is coming off the books at the end of twenty-five. High school track and field ends at the end of FY twenty-eight. The leach field and fuel storage, that's a bond anticipatory note. We have to pay at least a certain percentage of that every year as principal, and then we pay the interest that is laid out. That could accelerate or decelerate based on financials, but we have that as, I think it's a ten percent, obviously, that's paid towards principal. And then more significantly is the new high school construction. We bonded, we sold our first bond at thirty million dollars. This is the debt payment for that year one that comes on board, and that makes sure that we have enough cash flow moving into the first year of construction. More debt will obviously come on board, and we'll continue to update the public as that changes. So you can see the total capital debt assessment. We offset some of that track and field with some of the revolving that comes in from the athletic department. And then the total capital debt assessment that gets assessed to the towns is that two-point-six million. Over time, we can obviously see the big change now that we're onboarding that first bond relative to the capital debt assessment that goes to the towns. So here's the breakdown based on those percentages that were presented a few slides ago. That total two-point-six breaks out this way, and that will be reflected in the assessments to the towns, and that's shown throughout the budget. So that puts everything together as far as minimal local contribution. We've checked, taken a look at that, the variable assessment numbers, and the debt assessment. So when we put that all together, this is the traditional calculation page that we use within the budget. In the yellow box, you can see the updated minimal local contributions, which are stated by the state, our total proposed budget, and what this means for our towns boils down to this. Oops, excuse me, back up one slide here before I go too far ahead. These are our estimated revenues as of this evening. And then again, we have some discussion with regards to E and D appropriation coming up with our school committee after this. So this is what it boils down to for our operating capital debt and total assessments for each of our towns as of this evening, which again, we'll talk in more detail with school committee about those changes and updates. So in summary, we have completed a great deal of work over the last several months, which really begins in September as we build our timeline. Then we start meeting in October and building our budget projections. Again, we have a meeting tonight to discuss updates with school committee. We'll then move on to the budget vote next week, and then it's off to annual town meetings this May. You can see these dates that are remaining here in the orange box. And that's the conclusion of the hearing presentation. Thank you.
Great. So thanks so much to Mr. Mulcaren and to Superintendent Downing for the continued updates. This hearing is for the public, and if any member of the public would like to ask any questions or provide us with any commentary, now is the time. You are welcome. Just filling the void here, I do know that the not tri-town, but the joint FinCom meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago was really informative. We had a lot of people at that meeting as well. All of our town leaders were there, and the presentation was very well received, so that's important. I do see Trish C. has her hand up.
Hi, Trish Crawford from Stow Mass.
Hi.
I have a question. I'm wondering where we can see more granularity on those salaries, particularly at the administrative level.
Thank you for that. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Downing for the answer.
Yeah, in the meeting materials is the budget breakdown, and so you can see in each department the amount of dollars that are going to administrative salaries and salaries all across the system as well. So that's where you would find that detail.
I'm sorry, could you say again, where would I find?
In the meeting materials for the budget hearing. There's a document in there that is the full breakdown of the budget.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I would have note that that budget, these are all proposed budgets. The final budget won't happen until after the school committee votes on March thirteenth.
Okay. Can I ask one other question, and then I see somebody else with their hand up? I'm wondering, I see that facinghistory.org provides the, I think, the curriculum for one of the classes. I'm wondering where I can see the curriculum on that? And can anyone tell me what the cost is for that? Do they provide that, or do we pay for it? Thank you.
I didn't quite hear that clearly, Trish, because there was something breaking up in your speaker, but can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. I see that facinghistory.org, that organization provides the curriculum for the Facing History course at Neshoba Regional High School. And I'm wondering where I can find the curriculum information, and could anyone tell me, is there a fee that's paid to that organization for that course? How is that paid for? Thank you.
Ms. Friend, any background on Facing History there?
We have curriculum guides that have been developed for high school social studies that would outline the curriculum for families that can be found on the teaching and learning site of our website. I think any further questions about our Facing History course, we could engage in any further questions that you may have with our teachers at the high school and Dr. Boynton at the high school as well. But we have the curriculum guides available for families on our website.
Okay. And does the, does the high school pay them, or is that a?
The curriculum has been developed. We do not, we do not pay Facing History at this time. No.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I do see another hand up, Lynn Coviello.
Hey, everybody. Lynn Coviello from Bolton. Thank you for tonight. Appreciate the information. I was hoping you could point me to where I could find more information on the walk from the January seventeenth budget to the March sixth budget. So specifically, all the line items that were on that slide around the items that came out of the budget, just a little bit more information on the reasonings for those changes, as well as the specifics around those line items. That would be really helpful if available.
Yes. Hi, Lynn. Thank you. What you can find is on the school committee meeting materials, you will see the workshop presentation. You will also see a presentation from July seventh that has the walkover from the workshop date to that date.
You mean February seventh, Kirk?
That was February seventh, and then you'll see the joint Finance Committee meeting. That's posted on the Lancaster website since it was a meeting posted by the town of Lancaster. But I believe those meeting materials are posted on the other towns as well. You look at the school committee meeting from February twenty-eighth, and then the meeting for tonight, and the PowerPoint presentations walk through the updates, budget changes in each one of those presentations.
Okay, thank you. And does it give specifics of the dollars that were associated with each item?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. I will have a look. Appreciate it.
Is there anything in particular that you perhaps wanted illuminated, like an example?
I mean, I saw the slide. I candidly did not look in advance, so I was just reading it very quickly. So I just wanted to educate myself a bit more around the decision-making process. I was definitely interested in understanding the lunch program, for example, where I just am not educated on what we spend on some of these things, and I would really just like to understand a little bit better. I'm also interested, as I have a kindergartner, starting in the fall, around the school, the classroom sizes and things of that nature. So those are the areas of interest that I have, just from recent conversations in the town.
Great. And I think, Mr. Mulcaren, is there something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I would just point out to Ms. Coviello that the school lunch program does not live within the operating budget. So any changes that we make to the operating budget are not part of the school lunch program. We do provide within the budget the entire budget document, you'll see what the projected expenditures and revenues are. We have built in some offsets this year for our operating budget, but that exists outside of the operating budget.
Ross, does that include the staff?
Correct. Our staff salaries are paid out of the school lunch program, not the operating budget.
Thank you.
So more information, I could find more information about the school lunch program where? And the budget for that?
The budget, the projected expenditures and revenues for that are within the very back of our operating budget, even though it's not part of the operating budget. We do put it in there, so you can see it.
Any other, any significant changes proposed with regard to the lunch program?
As far as expenditures or revenues? No. The only thing we've done differently for expenditures is we've taken some offsets from school lunch reimbursements and revenues to apply them towards things that are allowable costs, such as the custodial salaries that work during the lunch period, obviously takes up a big part of their day. Some custodial supplies and the utilities. Obviously, it costs money to run our kitchens during the day. So there's offsets in there for those things. It's costs that are allowable under the school lunch program.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just want to give everybody a moment. If there are any other questions, please let us know.
Madam Chair, I do want to extend to Ms. Coviello. If she has any follow-up questions, to certainly reach out to me. And I'd be happy to entertain a phone call if there's any questions regarding staffing. I will say that in this budget, we have four sections in Bolton, four sections in Stowe, three sections in Lancaster with you'll learn about another position tonight for our kindergarten sections.
I appreciate the offer, and I may take you up on that. Thank you.
All right. So if there are any other questions, let us know. All right. I think that that is going to bring to a conclusion the budget hearing for this evening, as I am not seeing any other questions. So I'll turn to Amy for a motion to close the budget hearing and return into regular session.
I move to adjourn the budget hearing at six fifty-nine P M.
I will second that. And we'll take a vote. Scott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dana? Myself, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy? Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
All right. So thank you, everybody. We are now back in regular session of the Neshoba Regional School Committee Meeting, um, starting at seven PM. And we would just ask members of the public to, uh, rejoin us on YouTube and to leave the, um, Zoom call. Um, so, um, I just called the meeting back to order, uh, at seven PM. And, um, we have no new business or unfinished business on this agenda, but we do have a brief update from our superintendent on some finance and operations items. So Kirk, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, once again for the recognition. Um, so committee, tonight, uh, we're gonna bring some updates forward to you in terms of the proposed budget. Um, Mr. Mulcarren alluded to this in the presentation earlier. And, um, I'll just begin in general by saying, you know, as we came out of our meeting last week, we were, were able to show you that we were approximating the targets, um, to bring forward a budget that is in partnership with our towns in an effort to, uh, provide our students a high-quality education while also staying within responsible parameters. Uh, the committee suggested to us that we should be thinking about and revisiting, uh, some options, uh, as we looked at, uh, one point seven million dollars of E and D being a heavy lift. And so tonight, uh, tonight's slide deck is, I think, gonna illuminate for you how we were able to reduce the yield on, uh, 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 reduce the, the need, uh, for, um, E and D funds from one point seven million to one point four million. So, Mr. Mulcarren, why don't you take it away?
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Hello again to the school committee. Uh, again, we're providing our update number three, uh, with regards to the FY twenty-five proposed budget. I'm not gonna repeat the timeline, uh, information that I just shared at the public hearing. I know that you're all aware and you're aware of the work that we do throughout the budget season. Here's where our operating budget was as at the, at the end of the February twenty-eighth meeting, which was just above, uh, sixty-seven point one million, uh, with our operating budget. That reflected the changes, um, uh, in our, um, reductions, which were, um, almost, um, six, uh, six hundred thousand and then our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in proposed increased offsets, which got us to that one point two million dollar mark of that one point five million dollar target that we had set at the February seventh meeting, uh, that Superintendent Downing just alluded to. So based on that, this is where our town assessments were at as of that date. Uh, again, I won't get into detail here, but you can see them reflected. I think it's always important to review where we were at, at the end of the last meeting before we begin talking about the work that we've done, um, to date up into, uh, including, uh, today. Uh, Superintendent Downing?
So, we're gonna get into a little bit about some updates from our insurance advisory committee. Uh, we're gonna review the level of excess and deficiency appropriations, as well as talk about extracurricular stipends and, uh, looking deeper into the offsets and fees that we have. I want to, uh, preface, uh, any comments I have regarding the updates on, uh, insurance is that changes in insurance plan require ratification by both our bargaining units as well as this committee that will be meeting in executive session prior, uh, to our March thirteenth, uh, school committee meeting, uh, so that we can review, uh, and, um, uh, take action on, uh, the recommendation that's coming forward at that time.
Okay. So, uh, Superintendent Downing just spoke about, uh, pending ratification on health insurance. Um, you can see the changes since the last meeting here. That brings down our operating budget, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, technology hardware, um, in our work at budget warrant, uh, we've been preparing, uh, to move our, uh, revolving reports to quarterly reports. And in doing so, um, we've revealed that this year we took in a delayed payment towards our E-rate reimbursement, um, that goes back several years, uh, probably back to expenditures during FY twenty-one, um, which we can now spend, uh, this year, uh, and will need to spend this year based on those rules, uh, which we can, uh, prepay for some, um, hardware, uh, going into next year. Um, also in the executive summary of thirty thousand dollar offset, um, for our planned E-rate for next year was not reflected, um, even though it's on the offset page. So it's actually a total of two hundred thousand dollars in reduction to the, uh, executive summary page, which feeds into the total budget. Um, teaching and learning textbook adoption. I know that we've set a priority to make sure that we can follow through on our K to five literacy, um, uh, adoption for next year. So, and again, looking at our revolving accounts, we've been carrying a large balance in our lost books, uh, revolving account, which we can apply towards textbooks. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and do that and that will reduce the te- teaching and learning, uh, operating budget by twenty thousand. Athletic transportation, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about our athletic fees moving forward, but we're going to be able to offset our transportation, uh, thirty thousand dollars with changes in those fees. Uh, we're looking at our extracurricular stipend reduction, um. I know that we've discussed that the total is approximately two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that we carry in the operating budget to pay for stipends for extracurriculars, um, based on some, uh, fee structure that we want to put in place that will reduce that, um, overall operating budget line, uh, by fifty thousand. Uh, again, through our review of revolving accounts, uh, in more depth, we do see that we have a balance in parking fees that builds up at the high school. Um, it has not been used for anything more than paying for those tags and things that, the, that nature for our high school students. Um, we need to look at those fee structures, but also because we're carrying a balance, next year, we're gonna be able to offset our snow removal by fifty thousand. Additionally, we have an MRE classroom teacher that actually, uh, we want to put back into the budget based on some enrollment adjustments that Superintendent Downing, uh, can shed some light on right now, uh, but again, that's reflected here, uh, which brings our total operating budget reductions to six hundred and twenty thousand, fifty-eight dollars. Superintendent Downing, you want to talk about the MRE, uh, section?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So as, uh, we learned of the, um, benefit of the E-rate reimbursements that are coming back to us, simultaneously, since the last time I met with this committee, uh, we have enrolled, uh, two students in the grade levels where we were approximating needing another, um, teacher, I think specifically third grade. One is a current enrollment, one's an anticipated enrollment of a student returning uh, from another school system. So that really puts us close to the razor's edge on that. And, and given the fact that, um, with the E-rate reimbursements they were able to have in, the responsible and prudent thing to do is to return a position to M R E. So as we are looking at deploying that teacher, we can place it in the area that, um, will most be in need in the event that they uh, exceed the, uh, class side standards for which we aim to, to staff our classrooms. I think what would be important for the committee to noted, in the event that, um, it did not actualize, uh, we would not fill this position. Uh, we would only fill the position if, if the position, uh, becomes needed because we exceed those class side standards by which we build the budget.
So with regards to proposed athletic fees, uh, these will be agenda items for vote at the next school committee meeting on the thirteenth. Um, you can see our current fees here. So at the high school, we're looking for an additional twenty-five dollar per sport. Uh, again, we have a sliding scale for first, second and third sports and we have a family cap. We're looking to move that family cap from nine hundred to a thousand. Our middle schools currently only pay fifty-five dollars. We're looking to move that to, uh, fee to a hundred. As the school committee, uh, is aware, obviously, uh, neighboring districts, uh, and districts that are in the mid-watch, um, we're still in a very, I, I think, um, affordable place. Um, and again, we always work with families, uh, that are in need to make sure that their students can participate in athletics and activities. But certainly here, uh, we're talking about athletics. With regards to extracurricular fees, our district currently has no, uh, fee associated with participation in extracurriculars. Uh, we would like to, uh, propose a extracurricular fee of fifty dollars. This is not inclusive of every single extracurricular activity that's available K to twelve, um, and Superintendent Downing can shed a little bit more light on that. I will say again that we are only going to be charging fees when, uh, you know, uh, a family is able to provide that. If a student or family can, uh, show need, we certainly will work with them, uh, to make sure that the kids can still participate and a fee is not, um, obstructing any sort of participation. Superintendent Downing?
So we will not be charging any fees for service-oriented clubs or, uh, for affinity group clubs. They will continue to operate as free and we, we will, uh, pay the, uh, advisor stipend via the budget. It's for all the other activities for which, uh, we have costs, um, and, and need to cover those costs and to also, uh, offset the um, stipends for those advisors. So we're gonna be working closely with our administrative councils, specifically our principals, to thoroughly go through all the activities and make sure we're running activities, uh, that are useful with students, that are well-attended and, um, uh, provide that, that, that extra enjoyment out of school that our students are looking for.
Uh, sorry, Russ. Amy, I see your hand, but we're just gonna hold the questions until the end, but you can be first. Go ahead, Russ.
Okay, thank you. Uh, proposed parking fees, uh, again, if this is at the high school, these have not been raised in a significant amount of time. Um, I also want to just call back to the athletic fees. We don't believe that those have been updated since FY eighteen. Um, so with regards to parking fees, though, we don't, are not sure, uh, the last time these were updated. Um, but we do feel that, uh, the current structure of thirty-five dollars for half-year and seventy dollars for full year needs to be reviewed and we're looking at, um, a prorated, uh, monthly fee, uh, with a maximum of a hundred dollars. So essentially ten dollars a month. So if you're a student who gets your license and car mid-year, you wouldn't pay the full hundred, uh, you'd pay based on the months left in the year.
I'm gonna take this moment, Mr. Mulcarren, just to let the committee know and our community know, uh, relative to the building project that, um, the student, the, these fees are not impacted at all by the building project. There's been some questions about available spaces for students to park, uh, for the parking areas that will no longer be useful as the building is being raised. Uh, there are temporary parking that is being supplied that actually will increase the spots on campus. So there'll be no need for our students and faculty to park in other locations.
Okay. Again, so here's the, the summary of all those, uh, changes that was, that were presented before. Uh, and you can see where we're at with our projected offsets and our changes, um, to our operating budget. So, since that two-seven meeting, uh, again, on February twenty-eighth, at our last meeting, we got to one point two million of that one point five goal reduction in our operating budget. That included an appropriation of one point seven million out of our E and D fund. As of today, we're able to meet that one point five million dollar mark and reduce our E and D appropriation because we've gone to that approximately six hundred thousand dollars in reductions in the operating budget. So in essence, we've met two goals here. Uh, we have gone to a one point five million dollar reduction that was set in February seventh. And we've also reviewed and heard the concerns that were voiced at the last school committee meeting about the utilization, uh, of our E and D fund towards an appropriation for the budget. Um, as I know that I have also shared concern about being able to do that year over year, um, as there's no guarantee on what your E and D will, will, uh, be in the following year based on your expenditures and certain revenues this year. So, uh, again, you can see how we've changed our E and D appropriation over the course of this budget season. Our initial projection was one point two and we got that update on our chapter seventy or we got our initial chapter seventy numbers. We had to raise that number and again, we've been able to back it back down to one point four this year. Not all the way back to one point two, but we feel good about where we're at with a one point four appropriation. So here's our budget as of this evening with a sixty-six, uh, point five million dollar operating budget with represents that three point five two percent change over last year with regards to operating. Uh, and you can see the total budget, which includes the debt. So breaking down these numbers, uh, operating assessment for Bolton goes up four point one six percent. The operating budget for Lancaster goes up five point three nine percent and the operating budget for Stowe goes up two point six eight percent. Adding in the debt, the Bolton total assessment goes up seven point six five percent. Lancaster goes up nine point nine two percent and Stowe goes up six point six seven percent. Uh, and again, our next steps are the budget vote next week and then annual town meetings. Uh, and again, here's a review of the timeline, all the work completed to date, including this evening. So, thank you.
So thanks so much, Russ. And, um, so the committee now has an opportunity to ask questions about these handful of changes. Uh, they will be inclusive in the budget vote that we take on the thirteenth. So let's go over to Amy first.
Thank you, Leah. Um, I, I guess I raised my hand during the part of the presentation regarding extracurricular fees. Um, and I just wanted to get some additional clarification on the language you used. You mentioned, um, service-oriented clubs and affinity clubs would not be assessed this fee. Um, and I guess if you could just help me understand what those mean more, I'm not, I admit, I'm not totally familiar with what an affinity club. I just Googled it in to figure it out, but my concern is that, um, I don't want to add a fee structure for students that will prevent them, prevent students from being able to join clubs that help them build community and find a sense of belonging at Neshoba. It sounds like that's what you've
That's correct.
But I just want to clarify.
That's correct, Ms. Con. So I'll give you an exa- uh, an example. I, I had an opportunity to go visit with the African Heritage Club at the high school. That would be an example of an affinity group, um, that would not have a service fee. Um, others are, are connected in things like Yearbook, National Honor Society, um, those types of connections, um, where there would be fees or, or things that say, um, uh, other activities like, um, uh, the robotics club, the, the art club, those types of things would have that. Um, so we're gonna work with the principals on those and with our educators to make those determinations.
Okay, um, are, are we, when you talk about assessing an extracurricular fee, is that across the district at every level or is that just at the high school?
K to twelve.
K to twelve. Okay. Um,
Now, of course, our activities are much more robust and much more numerous at the high school than the other levels as well, but.
Yeah. But there would be in a way, a way for students who are on free and reduced lunches, for example, to wave, get that fee waived.
No, no student will be denied, uh, access to an activity based upon ability to pay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I had some other questions too, but I see other hands raised, so I want to make sure I'm not monopolizing here.
All right, I'll come back to you, Amy. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I want to preface my remarks to both Superintendent Downing and Mr. Mulcarren by saying that, uh, this is in no, my question is in no way a critique or a second guessing of anything that you've presented this evening. I think you've done both a masterful job in presenting both budget and the, um, suggested fee schedules. But, um, when I see that you're looking at, um, parking fees and extracurricular fees, and these are small, um, monetary amount, uh, fees, excuse me, it, it strikes me that the, the goal here is to look at all revenue sources. So my question then would be, and again, this is not a critique and it's not a second guess, it's just my own edification. If we're looking to offset increasing costs of the operation of our school district through these types of fees, those fees are generally directed at our students and their families. In this regard, has there been any consideration to looking at the facility use schedule, fee schedule for outside users? Uh, increasing those costs or at least harmonizing or you, uh, creating a universal fee schedule in regards to the facility's use? And if not, we're not.
Thank you, Attorney Gleason. I appreciate that. Uh, yeah, that actually is on the agenda for Mr. Mulcarren and I to look at here in the future. Uh, we're not doing it at this time in this budget season as we recently did those facility rates, but we understand that's a point of discussion and we'll be coming back to the committee in the future regarding that topic.
Thanks. Uh, over to Dana.
Um, I have one question on this presentation and then I did have a couple of questions on the other budget presentation, but I can circle back with that after Mike goes. So I just wanted to know with the additional teacher at M R E, are we able to utilize that additional teacher anywhere in the district if the need materializes? You know, you kind of said, if we didn't need it, we weren't gonna use it, but if. You know, you kind of said if we didn't need it, we weren't going to use it, but if.
Absolutely, Miss Ellis. So so I'll I'll bring the committee back to last year. We had uh three teachers budgeted for Mary Rollinson in kindergarten and four teachers at Florence Sawyer School. As it turned out, there was a run on enrollment at uh M R E. And enrollment didn't materialize at Florence Sawyer, so we shifted that position from Florence Sawyer to M R E. So this position uh we would be able to utilize anywhere in the district if we exceeded the standards by which we build the classes.
Great, I'm really excited about that. I love having that in our back pocket. I think that's really useful for everybody, honestly.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Miss Ellis.
Back to you, Dana. Let's go over to Mike.
Thank you. Um. So if I am um understanding this correctly, I I think I am, but I would appreciate just sort of a thumbs up. Um at the February twenty eighth meeting, we were um. We were at about one point two million dollars uh of a one point five million dollar goal. With the uh additional budget reductions to this evening. Uh primarily including health insurance, um we were able to reduce um the budget by six hundred thousand. Um and because we would have overshot our goal, we were able to. Reduce the offset from E and D by that extra three hundred thousand dollars is, am I getting that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Hares.
Okay, so I guess my my question is that, you know, for a while we had been looking at um. What the changes in healthcare insurance would be and um you know, things were relatively quiet and it felt like we were sort of collectively. Holding our breath, um sort of like we hold our breath for chapter seventy. Um. And it seems like we were very fortunate that there was a um such a a drastic reduction, relatively speaking. And I'm wondering if um. It was just as easy or or just as possible for these numbers to go on the positive side. In other words, what what?
No.
What lessons are there to learn that we we were we were fortunate? We just got, I mean, it feels to me like we just got really fortunate with our health insurance costs. And so what what would we do on the flip scenario if, you know, we ended up in the positive three hundred thousand? I mean, I know that. It's a moot point, but if if those numbers are so sort of delicate and um and volatile, uh how do we manage that? In the future.
Mr. Hares, it'd be tough for me to to frankly speculate. Um and so that's that's a difficult conversation to answer in there. For me to elucidate on how we were, how the health insurance came to light would be um. Premature since we have not had a discussion in executive session regarding ratification. So at that time, I'll be happy to bring some detail on that, how that came to fa- fashion, uh because it was uh. There's there's detailers through the hard work of both uh the the school district side of the insurance committee as well as our bargaining units.
Okay, fair enough. Can bring it up then.
So but uh Mr. Hares, I invite you to ask your question again, once we've had an opportunity to discuss. An executive session and give our bargaining units an opportunity to have their discussions for ratification.
Sure, thank you.
Sorry, over to Sharon.
Um I'm looking for some more clarification on um the fee structures. Um and I want to preface it by saying thank you for the thought that you put into finding ways to um. Bring the budget numbers back into what was asked for or reduce them to what was asked for. Um I I'm looking for some clarity as to how the um. Amounts were selected. So for example, um. In the high, for all the high school sports, the fees are increasing twenty five dollars per season. Um in the middle school, the fee is increasing forty five dollars per season for those student athletes. Um. For other students in all of the other programs where there have been no fees. The fee is going from nothing to fifty dollars. So I'm wondering if you can um. Tell me a little bit about the thought process behind why those numbers in particular and why it is um specifically that. Middle school sports are taking a much larger um percentage wise increase in their. Fees, well, high school sports, which are expensive to run. Probably the most expensive programs to run, I would guess, um are proportionately, it's a much smaller increase in fees.
Uh the first thing I'll start off about middle school uh sports is is there's one cost factor with middle school sports that hasn't been counted for in terms of fees. That's transportation. Transportation's quite costly. So going from fifty five to a hundred dollars, I think is quite responsible. And having an uh uh an athletic fee of a hundred dollars is still. Half the cost of what rec sports within towns even cost. So it's still, i- if you will, sort of. The most affordable game in town, i- if you will. Um in regard to the activities fees, we looked at the number of seats. In activities and we're approximately around eighteen hundred and we're guessing around uh we're we're, we did some ballparking around a thousand of those seats. Would be in activities that aren't uh to service um. Uh oriented activities or affinity groups. And so uh you can see at fifty dollars, that's where the fifty thousand dollar threshold would come from there. So we think those are both responsible fees. We think it's it's a fee that doesn't require uh too much skin in the game, but enough to help augment. And and um uh assist in in the expenses required to run those programs.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I think what you said is that. Transportation for high school sports is already built into. The cost and the budget that is not built into. The cost and budget for middle school?
Transportation is built into the budget, but at the middle school, we've never collected any fees to. Offset the middle school portion of that transportation. Uh it's been entirely offset by uh the high school, well, I shouldn't say that, the proportion of the fifty five dollars. So we think that proportional increase. Is a fair increase um for those activities. And there's other costs involved with with athletics as well that involve uh officials that involve uh um the sponsors of those programs and such.
Okay, thank you.
Back over to Amy.
Thank you. Um. I have another uh another kind of area of questioning that. Um didn't come up in tonight's presentation, but it was a previous um. I think it was a previous change, one of the first areas where we found cost reduction and um or. I I don't even know if that's the right term, but it involves the school choice. Um tuition in line item and. So I just have a question about some of those numbers because I've noticed that. We have a school choice tuition out, cost of four hundred thousand dollars with, I don't think any. Kind of revenue number to offset it in this year's budget and I'm wondering if. I could get some clarification around that because I recall last year we carried some money. Um and I feel like the initial budget had a fairly big number in there, like I can't find it right this moment, but I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Yeah, it is, uh Miss Khan. I'm gonna turn this over to Miss Mul- Mr. Mulcay. He can tell you the function of how. How a school, we pay out our school choice and it's returned to us in a different way. It's it's not set as an offset there. So, Mr. Mulcay.
Okay.
So um our school, well, it 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 re- we're able to use as an offset, so in, you know, as the school district has taken on. Additional school choice slots, this isn't something that was gonna sunset as we predicted it would based on previous votes of school committees with regards to school choice. Openings. So now that we're taking this on, doing more research, when that money comes into the district, it does get placed in a revolving fund that can be used towards. Um educational costs and most districts use that school choice tuition in as an offset to health insurance. It's sort of the most general place to put it. So we've already offset. Uh you're correct, it was already offset in one of the previous budget iterations by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the number that you see reflected today as a reduction in our health insurance is based on those pending plan changes that were up for ratification next week. Not uh that hundred and fifty thousand dollar offset is not included in there. That was already uh part of a previous budget presentation. So that that's already been factored in.
Okay, so the hundred and fifty thousand dollars reflects um. Money that's coming in for school choice students as of now. But we're not showing any kind of revenue money coming in for.
So revenue is actually not the place to put it. I hear what you're saying. It sounds like revenue, revenue is not the place to put it. So what I've learned is that because it goes into a s- school choice. Revolving directly, that's where we we would put it as a revenue and then expense it out as an offset towards health insurance versus placing it as a revenue.
Okay. I I was just thinking about trends with the money that. Our district gets assessed for school choice tuition out, charter schools, tuition assessment, looking at enrollment numbers and just wondering. Um you know, what we as, how that affects this budget discussion. And what we could do as a school committee to. Understand what's behind those numbers more, what's contributing to the trends and and how we can. Save, is this an opportunity for us to implement changes that would help us financially too?
So I'll just um interject here and say, Amy, I did hear Kirk say earlier tonight and he said it to me earlier today in our weekly meeting. That around the time that we um are asked whether or not we want to open school choice again, so April, May. He's gonna do a really comprehensive enrollment presentation and so I think exactly what you're wanting. Is definitely on the horizon because we do need to address it.
Okay.
All right, so any other?
There's nothing we can do in the current school year relative to school choice for revenue. Your your decisions on school choice impact your revenue in the following year after you open.
Okay, and then I just have one clarifying question if that's okay and I'm happy to wait until after Sharon or whoever else wants to go.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, it's regarding out of district um. Let me check my notes for the correct terminology here. Um out of district tuition or is that what the term is? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding. Yeah, out of district tuition. Is that something that's completely out of our control because it's related to special education needs? That.
As it's, as decisions are made in a collaborative process with families and special educators in the team meeting process, placements are made. Uh the cost of those tuitions and those placements are out of our control. Uh the O S D office, if you recall, uh determined fourteen percent increases last year on private. And this year it was four point uh three percent ish. I can't remember the exact Mr. Mulcay, but yes.
Okay, thank you. And I I apologize because I know that I asked similar questions last time and it's it's just um. Confusing each time I look at these numbers, you know, so thank you.
Over to Dana.
Okay, so I had a question about the high school enrollment in Bolton dropping. Are there, is it just that there are not? Kids in that age range going into the high school now or they're just placing elsewhere? Do you know that?
I think when I do the presentation for you in April around school choice, you're gonna, you're gonna. You're gonna know if they're going private, if they're going vocational, if they're going homeschool, if they're going private out of state, private in state. So it's a comprehensive presentation, you'll get all that.
And then for the minimum local contribution, a town can obviously contribute more, correct? Like, we're just setting what. What their minimum is.
Well, the variable assessment is the part that is the additional part that each town contributes. Uh based upon the regional agreement.
I would just want to add that the the minimal local contribution is set by the state of Massachusetts. At the time that we receive our initial chapter seventy notification, so within that notification, it will say. Uh based on foundation enrollment, um what our uh minimal local contributions are that each town needs to provide. So towns are bound by statute to provide that amount of money. Anything that's additional to that is subject to the variable assessment.
So are there times where towns have provided more than what they're required to? Like, can the, can people petition their towns to supply more? Funding towards education, probably, right? Or is that not normally how it works?
So I would jump in and, yeah, I would jump in and say that um. The budget that gets presented and that we approve on, you know, before March fifteenth is then set in stone. So any advocacy that. Townspeople wanted to do, the time has kind of passed for this budget season. But in, you know, the months leading up to this, they could go to the towns and say. Bolton, I know that four percent increase from last year's budget is your comfort level. But we as the townspeople of Bolton or Stowe or Lancaster, we want you to bring it up to six percent. Which would then give the school district X amount more. But there there's a collaborative process where Kirk works with the TAs to see how much more can we have this year? This is what we actually need and there's like a very complicated dance that happens over many months. So yeah, I mean, we could ask, as townspeople, we could say to our town leaders, we want more money appropriated to the school. It might then trigger the need for an override in each of the towns because they only have so much money to give. Kirk, do you want to add anything to that?
I I will also just like to add that if. The regional agreement sets down the rules for which, uh you know, funding, we're able to fund the the schools. So. Anything that comes to the school district goes to the school district. It would never be earmarked for a particular town.
Okay, I think that's all I had.
I just wanted to say that um I appreciate the, this kind of on Dana's point. I appreciate the fee schedule piece and here's why. I think that people who live in our towns who don't have children in the district are paying for this budget the same way that parents. Who have children in the district are paying this budget. And so if my child is gonna participate in three sports. Um then I should pay for that and my neighbors who don't have children in the schools shouldn't have to bear the burden as much as I do. So there are certain things in the school budget that I think, no matter who you are, you should be paying for it to make, to uplift your town. But for some of these extracurriculars, I do think that we need to hear. The words of our taxpayers that don't have children in the schools and and know that they can't keep affording these increasing prices. So. Those of us who actually use the schools, there should be some level of more that we pay on some of those extracurricular things. So that's why I support the um increase in the fee schedules. Um over to Sharon.
So I have just one more um thought or concern, I guess, about the fee schedules um that I. Want to um put out there and I will preface it by saying. That um I agree with what Leah says about um the fees. Then are the parents pay the more rather than asking taxpayers to pay the more and I think that's fair. I think that's appropriate. Um and I also want to say that I recognize that what we are looking at right now is. Kind of the first draft of how those fee structures might work um and how um. Determinations would be made around, is it um. A service club, is it an affinity club? I think that's pretty clear cut. Um but my concern really is that the language seems um. A little bit vague to me and it makes me uncomfortable with what clubs may be considered to be cut. And what clubs may be considered to be kept um and how that determination is made because. There may be some clubs that are very small that are are maybe would be considered niche clubs, but they really are supporting. A group of students that would not have that sense of belonging as Amy alluded to earlier or spoke of earlier. Um without that and even though it's a very small group or it may be a niche area. It is important for those students. Um and so. I feel like I would like to have more clarity around what. Is the determination around something being made? Or considered to be valuable and worthy to continue or not. Valuable enough or have enough in. Valuable enough or have enough interest in it, um, that it would be discontinued. Um, so that is a concern that I have, I do believe that, um, you know, everybody's in it to work for the best interests of our kids. But that is a question, a concern that I have.
Well, Madam Sheriff, I may? I think Miss Pocky closed with the very sentence I was gonna start with. Is that we have the best interest of kids in mind, and that's why it's a partnership with the building administrators and their teams on making those decisions. Cuz they're the ones that know the answers to the questions that you presented here. So we will make sure we advance your concerns forward as we make those decisions. Sometimes closed, clubs are 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 shut down and closed simply because they do not have an advisor. And we cannot run clubs without an advisor, so there is a supply and demand aspect to it, that is a reality with our clubs. Um, but I know our guidance teams and our administrators and our teachers will work with students to make sure they have places that bring them a sense of belonging in the school.
Over to Karen.
I have questions around the um, the public uh, hearing materials, do you want me to hold up?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, I didn't, I know we were kind of shifting back and forth, so I just wanna make sure I understand, um, the special. Oh, the the fees have, you know, dramatically increased the tuitions. Um, but it's really hard to tell from those numbers. If that we've had an increase in students that need out of placement districts, or is that an increase in the tuition for students that are already? Enrolled.
Uh, it's both, and I wouldn't disclose that information by student anyway, because that has the potential of marginalizing folks that are, have high. Tuition rates, we have some tuitions that are uh, over three hundred thousand dollars and other tuitions that are sixty thousand dollars. It's all based upon the student need and the programming that that student needs.
Yeah, I would, I would never ask you to disclose individual things, I was just curious in general what the trends are.
Yeah, we, we had both, we had an inc- we had the double, we had an increase in the tuitions and an increase in the number.
Okay, and is that also true for the transportation, cuz that's just a huge? Increase, is that, is that the same case, have the, have the transportation fees gone up dramatically as well?
Well, if you recall from the presentation on transportation, we were able to negotiate that rate uh, quite low uh, by going to a new vendor. So we're, those anticipated costs down dramatically. But yes, uh, the cost of special education and transportation across the Commonwealth is a significant problem. I know it's gonna be addressed this Friday, when the Tri-County superintendents are meeting with our uh, legislative representatives. In our annual meeting, and these are the topics that we're bringing up to them, Mr. Mike.
Okay, thanks.
So, over to Jackie.
I just wanted to ask, one of the things, as Sharon was talking, um, I I understand where that concern comes from. I am in favor of the fee structure, but I'm curious, I know at the elementary level, we've run enrichment. Programming with volunteers and I wonder, like, over time, could that be something that our building administrators think about? Outside of the elementary school, so it's not necessarily a, a question, but more of a, a comment that, you know, in these types of situations, um. Leaning on the interest and expertise of our communities to support our students as well.
Yeah, we'll certainly take that, Dr. Reiner, and eh, take that uh, guidance and uh, look into the possibility of that. I I would like to say that uh, Mr. Mulcay and I do have a meeting coming up with uh, the presence of our P T Os. We're hoping to establish an annual structure with them that has regular meetings throughout the years, and that sounds like an excellent topic for that group.
Hi, everybody, I'm not seeing any more golden hands. Um, I think that we have a lot uh, here that's been presented, and we thank you Kirk and Ross and Laura. And your entire team, I know that it's, you're just the. Wonderful faces, we see, there's a lot of people who are helping you, um, so we appreciate all your hard work. And we thank our uh, residents for being with us here tonight, of course, they can continue to keep in touch with us um, by email. The final budget vote will take place next um, week. And remember, school committee members will have, uh, will be in person and will have an executive session at six P M. Alright. I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, let's take the vote, Scott.
Yes.
Myself, yes, Dana.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yeah.
Shondor.
Yes.
Karen. Sharon.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Alright, everybody, thanks so much.